Okay, I have five o'clock.
Somewhere.
Somewhere. Somewhere here, somewhere. Okay, good, all right. Welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. My name is David Newmeyer. I am a legal aid director in Lynchburg. I am also the chair of the EGAD Virginia Study Committee of the Virginia State Bar. That wonderful name stands for the Entry Growth and Distribution of Virginia Attorneys. And it was formed by bar president Chitty James last, early last spring, in order to respond to the growth of legal deserts in Virginia and also the declining number of law students applying, law graduates applying to take the Virginia Bar, which has grown drastically in the last 10 years. And we are going through a multi-part information gathering process. This is the eighth field hearing we've had in rural legal deserts around the state. And we are working with a partner organization, which is the Access to Justice Commission of the Virginia Supreme Court. And Andrea Bridgeman is chairing a touring committee for that. And I will let Andrea introduce her and why the Access Commission is interested in this.
So the State Supreme Court Access to Justice Commission was formed almost 11 years ago. And one of its goals was to explore ways in which the court and the court system could improve access to justice for all Virginians. And acknowledged at that point that, I say jokingly, that as lawyers, we think we, we think we know everything. We know what we know, but we don't know what we don't know. So while David's focus of inquiry is legal deserts and the profession, the Access to Justice Commission's goal in having these public forums is maybe a little bit broader. Or we're trying to hear from the, I think you're all part of the profession, right? And I don't mean to dump on us, but, but we don't know what we don't know. And people who have a problem accessing lawyers, the lawyers aren't even going to know what problems they have because they never, they never end up interacting. Anyway, I have to say I've had more success soliciting input from the legal community than we have from the public. As David says, this is our eighth sort of session. We started out in rural communities. We'll do three more probably at the end of the first quarter next year in Northern Virginia, Richmond and Tidewater area, a little bit more urban. And so we are being recorded. We are being live streamed.
Yes.
And so, you know.
Yeah.
And my duty is to tell you one more thing. And that is fireworks is that way, restaurants are that way.
Yes, and we brought refreshments. We took, we arranged for Andrea to help herself. We have water and other goodies from the back table. And the livestream is taking place on two platforms. One is YouTube, which is publicly accessible. So we wanted to have the public be able to watch and listen if they'd like. And it's linked on the State Bar website. And as well, for members of the EGAD VA Committee, we have a Ring Central platform, which allows them not only listen and hear, but they can message us as well if they have questions they want to raise with the witnesses, anything like that.
And let me also introduce Liz Schiller, who works at the court. And she is the staff director and the person who holds the Access to Justice Commission together. And Chris Stantz, who is committee. I'm very bad at names. I know that she runs, she runs legal services for the bar and then she's amazing at it. But I'm really bad with the titles, for goodness sake. Thank you.
That's good. And the livestream recordings, to the extent that they are of good quality, will be, are posted on the State Bar website as well. So you can go back and watch yourself after tonight if that interests you or if anybody else has testified. And our next steps after we finish our hearing process, we will be within our committee debating on recommendations that we want to make for how to resolve these problems or address them. And make recommendations to the State Bar, to the General Assembly, to the public, local communities, whoever we think is appropriate. And my hope is that we are ready to release that report in March. That is my goal.
Right, and for the Access to Justice Commission, John Whitfield, the court chairs that commission, we will make a very, very limited report in the meeting of the next month. And we're also going to try to wrap up by the end of the second quarter next year, if not sooner, with a report to the court, which I think will also be. Yes. And we are in discussion about what the final work product is, how deep we will go into recommendations. But we will definitely point out areas in which we have, you know, become aware that improvements need.
Right, thank you. Okay. We are ready for our witnesses. I thank you all for appearing. And was there anyone who registered online? Okay, I just, I like to reward good behavior. And, but, and so, John, you registered online for this?
To.
Okay. Okay, Woodstock, okay. And we did hear from you in Woodstock last week. All right, so we're going to put you last today. I hope, we're going to put you last today. I hope that's all right. I would like to invite Judge Mayer to be our first witness. She began her legal career, I'm proud to say, with Virginia Legal Aid Society's office in Danville, Virginia. And I've been so glad that she stayed with Legal Aid and now on the bench through her career, helping people every day of the year. And Robin, you can, we can have you stand up at the end of the table here so you can face the audience and the public. We can give you a chair, whatever you'd like to do. Okay, yes, okay. Would you like a chair or do you want to stand? Whatever, what are you? Okay, we are, we are talking, yes. We're talking about the existence of legal deserts. To the extent to which adequate legal help is not available in the community's businesses when they can't get legal help when they need it. What happens? What do you see in the courts when legal help has not been provided?
I think I would.
Yeah.
I'm just afraid I'm just going to think of everyone. That's okay. I mean, I didn't think forward any, I'm trying to see. A lot of litigants are not at home lawyers. And especially in civil cases. Sometimes. Criminal cases, but civil. And because everyone's there to get money or fight off the claim for money or get their possessions back or. It's just a sea of people out there. There's four or five attorneys who were there to do the work of that day. And the rest kind of have to sort it out themselves. We had some leave the man. They don't know how to put evidence into. Get stuff admitted into evidence understandably. And it's hard to know, as I've spent 30 years on that side of the room, putting things in evidence and backing back other sides' evidence. It's, it's a fine line now that we're on. Here on bench. And, you know, seeing woefully deficient. Really heartfelt presentations and knowing that but for their ability to be a lawyer, they might win their case. They might not win their case. I mean, they, they have probably a really good case, but I don't have anything for them at the end of the day. And that is frustrating for me. I'm sure it's really frustrating. So I'm sure many of you will echo that. So I'm sorry to take that first big one also.
What, what are the guidelines for you as a judge and how much you're allowed to help somebody presenting this?
Well, I mean, it's, there's no bright line. And I guess it depends on where you are. Where, I don't go into sophisticated courts like probably Fairbex or most of the places I go are quite rural. And people get most of their legal education from television or their friend. And so it depends. If both parties are unrepresented, I try to, I guess I try to help each a little bit to get out what the issue is because I can't offer them any help if I don't know what the issue is. And believe it or not, often that's really a struggle for some to articulate. They know why they're there, but I'm the one that has to know why they're there. So, you know, you're really, and certainly if there's a lawyer on both sides or even one side, you're not supposed to help one side more than the other. Do I tell every single unrepresented litigant, now I have to hold you to the same standard as, as an attorney? Well, no, but I know a lot of people do and it's, it's very challenging. Not as much for me, I'm sure, as for the actual litigant to whom this matter is of utmost importance. That's, that's hard.
Is there, to your knowledge, any, any other support in the areas you serve? For the litigants, for instance, I know that in my hand, a lawyer is I'm thinking I don't know about.
I mean, we are specifically allowed to refer people who are mentioned, low level layoffs, which I do. I write that, right, exactly. I don't write it on the times. I also refer people to Virginia, where we're rural, quite a lot, writing half a million. What I have found is that people have a lawyer in earnest as a rule. And they, they say often what they think the judge wants to hear. And I try to weed through some of that and see what is the problem? Does this person need a lawyer? Do they need an explanation? What, what are they trying to get? And so we take an extra minute and we look into that a little. And that's why I write down the number for them because they all say, yes, I'll contact them. But if they don't know how to do it and take that next step, it's, it's, it's no good.
And one of the other things that the Access to Justice Commission has been looking at is trying to rewrite some of the common forms in plainer English. Do you find that the forms are, I don't know how much you get involved in that as opposed to the clerks, but.
Well, I didn't know what a debt new warrant was until I went to law school. Why would this person, you know, and yet that's the form they filled out? So, but of course, they often don't realize that proving value is an essential part of the claim. And so how you get into it and they, they say that the person took all my stuff and here's pictures of everything they took and I want it back. I dressed. Well. So having some sort, maybe not the word debt new or some of the other words that they use, might be helpful. Gosh, now I'm just getting all the crap. Yeah. People don't know what the next step, you know, they, they don't know how they figured out how to get their claim in court. And maybe they paid to file it and maybe they signed off and got an informal popperous. But it's, I think they don't know what the next step is. They come to court, they don't have a driver's license. Well, what's the next step? Well, I'm going to try to get my license. What does that look like?
But even informal poppers, would we change that to fee waiver?
Perhaps.
It still has a lot of syllables.
I mean, the bottom line is, they can pay and they don't want to pay.
Right.
So if they ask for that free paper thing and it gets to them or perhaps it should not, you know, be all a declaration of independence writing. But I feel like making it more user-friendly, if that's possible. I'm telling you, the education level of many of these people is, is breathtakingly woefully inefficient.
And do you think in your area, if there were more lawyers, I guess what I'm trying to say is, can the population pay for more lawyers?
Is there enough business to keep more lawyers moving?
Well, we are suffering in, say, the western part of the state, Algeany County. We've had lawyers retire, you know, and leave and go other places. And we're going to face a real shortage there. I hear the same as through my friends in Lexington, but they can speak to that on directly. So I don't know the answer to that. Everybody always is going to need a will or a custody order or something. And I'm, I'm sure the lawyers that we have are quite busy. I, I really hope your committee can solve this whole problem because it's just, it's a skirt. It's, it's hard.
What suggestions do you have for us or solutions to consider to encourage more people to become lawyers in Virginia and to come to areas like this?
Well, of course, when I started with your program, it was many years ago in 1990, but my first salary, the annual salary was $19,365. And I had left, before I went to law school, I worked at Domino's Pizza where I made $27,000 a year. So after law school, I finally paid $19,000 and I thought, well, I am working my way down the ladder of success. And thought seriously about getting a delivery driver job in Danville, which I did not do. But, so I was delighted as we stuck with it and my colleagues came along behind me. Suddenly we have loan forgiveness programs and that is fabulous, in my opinion. I would have come anyway, but it would have been nice. I have paid my student loans for 10 years. It was a modest amount and I did it and whatever. But I would definitely have probably been able to convince someone else to come with me with these other perks that they have. And of course, the starting salaries are way higher now. I'm sure that has been. How could it not? But I think it's really hard to convince lawyers in private practice to do stuff for free. And I get that. So how to make that more interesting, enticing? I'm, I'm not sure. I think all the cases are interesting. I would have been a terrible private attorney because I would have just gone down every rabbit hole. But I think that's part of it too, is to make it more acceptable slash required for, we talk about a professional responsibility, but you know, solo practitioners can't realistically get 10% of their time to, I don't know, you know, debt collection cases or whatever. So it's, I do think the hiring, things that have come along, the crowd behind me are really helpful and really good.
Do you perceive that small business in this area also has trouble getting legal help?
I bet our bar president would probably answer that better. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't have a sense of that one. But if there's fewer lawyers, you're probably going to have trouble. But I don't know, maybe Mr. Thurman.
Okay, well, we'll give him a chance to. Chris. Chris, could you repeat the question? Well, I didn't hear it clearly.
Yeah. Well, I'm really, in, in the western part where I'm, we probably even, we don't have a public defense department. So it's all public defense. And so there's several agencies out there. This is their bread and butter. You know, they're, they're kind of like old school, hanging around waiting to be assigned cases. Because that's, that's what they do. And it's a great experience for them. And then we have a rotation in court. And so we always have the saying, whereas they're just not banded together in a public defense office. The other two places like that, we have very complex public defense offices who are, in my experience, most disprepared, they never find. Mostly spoken to in the medical. We don't, we don't really have any issues on the criminal side, at least that I see. Because everybody gets a lawyer in criminal case, jail time's all they have. And we, and we have quite a few that come in and thinking, well, that's true. You know, they're there for their collection case with city debt. And it took everything they had within them to stand up and not ditch board and come in and say, I'd like a lawyer, please. And it's hard to give them the bad news. I mean, nobody says for jail time, I'll take it. The bad news is you're not going to have. So that's a bill of change. But the quality of the lawyers, for the most part that I see, is great. They're on time and they pay attention. They're precarious and that makes a huge difference. And they're busy. So I hesitate. I've never been turned down. I've asked someone to do anything for free. When I was at Legal Aid, that was true. I never wanted to turn down my son, which I don't appreciate. And the same is true now. So I appreciate that too. It may be that people will do it if you ask. We just have to figure out the right way to ask. Sure, I'll be there. Thoughts on that?
Thank you. I, prior to working in Lynchburg, I worked for a legal aid office in the first Georgia county. And I had two lawyers in the office that delivered pizzas at night.
Yes, I believe it. It's great money.
Thank you.
Sure.
Shall we take the bar president since you've already been introduced? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, sure. My name is Vincent Thurman. I've been in practice 10 years. I've been in this area for 10 years. And the honor of being the Rockberry Bar Association President for the last, I think, five. Although there's some confusion. Dan might have been some of the people that I'm quite sure. I think I, excuse me, what I said. But yeah, it's a question to be here. I'm ready to jump right in or if you have some questions, start me off.
The two topics, as you heard, legal deserts and inadequate availability of legal help and the declining number of law graduates willing to take the Virginia Bar.
Certainly, sir. And I actually have a lot of those, but also have some interesting insights, I think, because I am desperately again, unsuccessfully been trying to lure attorneys to the area of hiring my brands. The young attorneys in your offices, I'm from 56 and others, we're not. And we would love to hire your firms. And desperately, as we go, we have a vaults repeating town and somehow we are some kind of negative attract. The answer after talking to many of these people after the last three years actively and unsuccessfully trying to hire, it ain't complicated. It's cash. These people are, these young students, I think what happened is in 2008, you had this great debt boom. And you can graduate from any law company, $200,000 a year and, you know, money attracts people. I have no doubt that that's the reason we have seen them downfall is because, well, that's funny. You want to make money, go into business, get in the head. Maybe it's not cash, cash account, only loans. Especially for rural attorneys. I have these heartrending conversations with a lot of young lawyers. I look at them and smile and say, hey, I thought you could make a quarter billion in a big city firm. Or you can come work for me. I'll pay you 20% of that. And whatever reason, and I'm impressed by this. The other thing is, you know, it's, and I, I confess my own, what's the word to look for, bias here. I have an enormous amount of student debt, which I will die, I will never repay my student debt. Every law student these days is graduating with a quarter million dollars in debt. So I'm not just telling, hey, you want to come work for me dirt cheap? I can start paying, you know, 40, 50,000 out of the buy. I'm telling this to people who are quarter million dollars in debt looking to pay off their loans. And these people could go to try to get to big city. My theory, sorry, I've been waiting for this meeting. I'm here for this. My theory is the, the best incentive that I saw was exactly as Judge Mayer very cautiously pointed out. Don't forgive us. I don't know if this is within your ballot, but if Congress, Virginia can do something like this, because I know most of these loans are federally backed. But if there could be some sort of state Commonwealth-based debt forgiveness programs for attorneys willing to move to a certain amount of time in an area, I'm not the first one to suggest this to you, I can tell. Maybe there are problems that I haven't foreseen. But I mean, we're talking to these guys saying, hey, come be in debt for the rest of your life, be a rural attorney. I mean, I'm looking for saints or psychopaths and neither one of them are very fit for a rural attorney. So it's, it is a very big problem and one that me and my partner have struggled with for a long time now. With, with no hope of success and no control of our actions. It is bleak. I do want to address some wonderful comments by Judge Mayer. And I, I got a lot on my mind, but feel free to jump in if you have any questions or anything like that. So the education dart around here these minutes, I will back that up. And if you're in a rural area, some of my people can't read. And so they walk in and I go, oh, what, what are you paid for work? And they go, what do you mean paperwork? I go, well, you got arrested and they gave you more. They go, what? I go, the paper they gave you. And I mean, that's, that's 30% of my clients. And so whenever I'm talking to these people and I'm trying to explain the names like, well, you know, it's a, it's a, we got a great absolute case here. And they go, huh? I go, so I mean, I spend a lot of time with these people walking through base by base by base by base. I don't know if you guys have anything to do with that, but yeah, if the clients were more educated, there would be less of a need for attorneys because they could do basic things like a warrant in debt, a warrant in debt, you know, things you don't need in a.
They leave the contract before they sign to begin.
Oh, my heart goes out to all, because, I mean, let's be honest, the old Dodge of the big city guy coming in with some snake oil to sell is a very real thing. There are people I can say the name of, but they keep doing it for defamation, that constantly get assigned contracts and they come in to me. I've had 18 with one guy and I just looked at this contract, some poor guy has signed it because, and these people are smart. They're good with their hands. They know how to repair a tractor. They know how to raise birth a cow. They're brilliant human beings. They're not educated in the sense we are. And so they come in and these brilliant people, which get taken advantage of by people who are just more sophisticated. And the agonizing thing is, nothing I can do about it. Because the contract is a good contract and as one of our old attorneys says, every person was born with the God-given right to make a really bad deal. And so, but the other thing is, and I want to make this, this is a hard one for me to make without sounding elitist and arrogant, so forgive me. Money for lawyers, and even though I do think that the overall wealth of attorneys, especially in rural areas, is declining precipitously, we make a lot more money than a lot of these people. And I have people coming in and they say, this, this guy, you know, would we can add a 1,200 bucks? To them, that's too much rent. And these people need that $1,200, but I cannot figure out a way financially to make ends meet for that. I'm sitting there going, if I charge less than 3,000, I'm going to make, I'm going to lose money on those cases. Or someone will be in a very small personal injury case where they're very real and they have medical bills they can't pay. And I have to like give them the bad news, just as Mayor said. It isn't a bleak, apocalyptic scenario out there. We give horrible news to people every day in my office. Of just, oh, I'm sorry, you've been hurt. The economic reality is the situation, not there any legal revenue here situation. Have you thought of throwing a malt on cocktail at someone? I don't actually say that through the right, but I've thought about it. But I mean, it's just brutal how little access to justice there is for the impoverished and the indigent. And there is no, every attorney I know, and I, I've started to get, people have been very critical of me in the past because this is a very unpopular opinion, I'm going to warn you. Pro bono is a terrible idea. I'm just going to say that, right? Bold claim, bold claim. Let me back it up. Pro bono is great. It's good for the individual attorney. It helps out the individual person that relying on it as a solution for a problem that is inherently systemic, does not work.
You are not breaking any news to us. It is, it is a factor, but it's not.
Fantastic, fantastic. Okay, I was worried I was going to be ostracized for that. Because I was pro bono. I mean, it's just, it's a great opinion, you know, the attorney swooping in for free. Ton of pro bono, but I didn't even more, I don't want to, maybe I should, so I can, I always think I should rub people's noses and whatever they say. You guys should more pro bono. You know, but I do a ton of lobo. Every attorney in this area I know of. And I've had the pleasure, I set a big bar, so I'm on pretty good terms with 99% of the parents in the area. He knows who he is. But the, the overall in this area is there's a lot of lobo going on, which is what I call, I'll accept the fruitcakes as payment. I accepted one little lady who gave me a half a chocolate bar because she was nuts. And I said, sure, I'll work on that in the second quarter, get this guy out of your hair. And I threw away the chocolate bar. So I think that's pro bono still, but I felt like it's pro bono. I've talked about it some about it, but every single attorney in this world is swamped. I, I was, you know, as soon as Judge Mayer got asked, I was, oh, why didn't we answer that question? We had a local guy, David Nat. We all knew he worked hard, but when he retired, the floodgates opened. We have been completely underwater ever since. When, I mean, the good news is, I'm literally complaining about too much business, right? You know, I mean, someone shut me up here and the money's flowing in, but there's too much to handle. We literally can't, do not have the manpower. My partner, I have two kids, my partner does not. She's working, you know, 80, 90 hours a week, which, again, no one becomes a rural attorney who's going to work 90 hours a week, right? We all thought it was a great work-life balance. I would have gone to a big firm if I wanted to do that lifestyle. But it's, it is very real that we just get crushed under the weight of all these people needing help. There's only so much help we can give. And it is heartbreaking that the people who truly need the help are the people we really can't help. I'm talking a lot about the defendants in unlawful entertainers. You know, you get some, some slug lords in rural areas and you just want to look at them and go, oh, man, if they just knew, oh, you're, and you want to tell them this or go to court and be like, hey, you know, you can like countersleep $5,000 flat because you shut off your lights. Sometimes I just tell them that, but it's just like, you know, I don't, I don't think you're supposed to do that. But now you get just case after case after case after. And it's one thing I wouldn't put on your radar. I'm sure, I'm probably insulted. I'm probably insulting you guys, you guys think about this for a living, but I'm an amateur, uh, at solving the ones problem. Oh, fantastic, fantastic. Uh, AI has actually been, uh, something I have been low-key referring people to. Because I got on ChatGPT and I said, type me a bar notice. Boom, it was a better bar notice than anything I've ever drafted. And I looked at it and as I watched my, you know, my technically my livelihood slipping away from me, I thought, this might be a good thing for society. Is that you could just get onto a program fairly easily, say ChatGPT, draft me a position for anything. You don't do a better job for most attorneys. Not me, of course, if anyone's listening or asking about my bill of crisis. But, um, it's very, very good. And so I've been telling people, you know, you can. Worst case scenario, go to ChatGPT, I make no guarantees it's the outcome. I don't know how many, uh, times you guys have gotten stuff filed before, you know, it was probably written by ChatGPT, but.
Two that I can tell from.
It's, it's, uh, it's interesting. Also, a lot of my clients have been clearly. ChatGP, right, I'll let it to my attorney and it goes, come in and I go. Wow, that's why I just got a lot smarter. And this is like, yeah, it's like, wow, these people are good. Uh, I've talked about the education dart in this area, it is very real. Uh, that's the, the, uh, but to answer your question, is there work to support the attorneys? Absolutely. I'm turning away or charging, um. Go away fees, I think is the right term. Uh, and a lot of cases simply because I'm overbooked and I say, hey, listen, if you want to hire me. You're gonna have to pay twice a reasonable rate right now because I'm completely overwhelmed and you buy my weekends from me. And people are still paying, uh, because there is such a need for attorneys. I, I joke, I'm not just the best attorney in town. I'm the only attorney in town and therefore also kind of the worst, if you think about it logically. But if you look for a general practice attorney in Lexington, Virginia, your choices are met for a hundred and fifty something. That's it. Uh, anyone else is either specialized in domestic or half-retired or anything. Are we talking about two people for a community of thirty-seven thousand? I think you're supposed to have one for every three thousand, we have one for every eighteen thousand, it's, it's brutal. Um, businesses, I do want to, since you guys specifically brought it out, I think of a lot of business clients these days. Most businesses in low areas though. Judge Russell, you're making errors, that's the same look you make when you're.